Welcome to the May 10th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Eddie Smotherman has our prayer and our pledge.
Okay, if you would, please bow your head. Lord, I pray that we can all remember that we're all made of one blood. Let us encourage one another by displaying peaceful actions, love, respect, and watchovers during this meeting. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you have a couple of items on your consent agenda. Those questions, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, you've got the minutes of the April 12th, 2018 regular meeting in front of you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, will now consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 18OZ17 to zone an area along Twin Oak Drive as single-family residential six RS6 district simultaneous with annexation.
He withdrew.
That is correct. Yep, from last week, we deferred that. Okay? Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 18O23 amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 33, Water and Sewer, Section 33-2, 3350 regarding water and sewer tap and connection fees and adding 3344 regarding step sewer user fees.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, will now consider for approval a renewal of certificate of compliance for retail liquor store for Evelyn J. Robinson at Murfreesboro Wine and Spirits, 3016 South Church Street.
Mayor, this is a annual, biannual requirement by this location that's already in business and the application for this certificate meets our requirements and I recommend approval.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, pursuant to Resolution 18RPH20 adopted by the city council on April 12th, 2018, will need to conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to approximately 4.53 acres in the planned commercial development, PCD District located along New Salem Highway and Salem Creek Drive, Salem Creek Commons, PCD. Development Management Group LLC is the applicant notice that said public hearing was published in the April 24th, 2000 issue of a local newspaper.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. Our first public hearing tonight is an amendment to the PCD, the Salem Creek Commons, PCD, located at the southeast corner of New Salem Highway and Salem Creek Drive. You'll recall back in 2017, this property was rezoned from commercial fringe to PCD for primarily for the development of a car wash on the lot that I just drew the X on, the easternmost lot. After the developers began working on plans and moving forward with those plans, they found a restrictive covenant which has since prohibited them from locating the car wash on that lot. So now they're coming before you today to amend the PCD, to move the car wash to the center lot. That's the primary impetus for this, for this request. And there are a few other changes that as staff reviewed the pattern book with the applicant, we, the applicant and staff agreed that there were some other changes that needed to be made as well. As I mentioned, the first change is the shifting of the vehicle wash to the center lot. Second, because of a sanitary sewer line and easement on the easternmost lot that cannot be relocated, it is unknown exactly how that easternmost lot will be developed. And so there, there's no layout for the easternmost lot. However, the pattern book does specify the uses that can go there and does commit to meeting all of our zoning regulations and design guidelines. Third, when this PCD was approved in 2017, the citywide design guidelines had yet to be adopted and the elevations that were proposed at that time do not conform to the current design guidelines. In the amended pattern book, the elevations that have been submitted are upgraded to conform to the design guidelines. Fourth, two uses that were permitted in the original PCD, department and discount stores and financial services are proposed to be prohibited in the PCD. And lastly, in the original PCD, there was a right turn lane proposed entering into the site on New Salem Highway, entering into the center lot. And now that we have the plans for New Salem Highway and it's moving forward, at least the section between Casey Lane back to the interstate, but we have plans for the area, the section of New Salem Highway west of Casey Lane. And the amended plan modifies the language of the plan to state that a need for a right turn lane will be evaluated by the city engineer at the time of site plan review. And the reason for this is, is a review of the T-DOT plans for the widening of New Salem Highway shows that they're proposing generous turn lanes, or excuse me, generous shoulders on the side of, both sides of New Salem Highway. And they're actually going to be eliminating some of the existing turn lanes. And so the shoulders, which are approximately 10 feet in width, will substitute for turn lanes. Now, at the time of site plan review, depending on where the, where, at what stage of construction or not construction, the New Salem Highway improvements are in at that time, the city engineer will have the ability to evaluate whether or not any turn lane improvements are made. But considering the, the plans for New Salem Highway and the shoulder, our engineering department and transportation department did not see that the, it should be mandatory to require the right turn lane, that it should be evaluated at a later date. With that being said, the planning commission did conduct a public hearing on this matter on April 4th and voted unanimously six to nothing to recommend approval. Mr. Mike Gilbert with Development Management Group is here representing the developers of the property and he can make a PowerPoint presentation if you wish, or answer any questions if you wish. I'll be happy to answer any questions either before or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley? All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing for this change of PC request. If you're wishing to speak for or against, I have a few things that we ask. If you come to the podium, if you'll state your name and address, if you'll keep all your comments directed to the city council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. If you're representing a group, you'll have five minutes, minutes as an individual, you'll have three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 18OZ20 to amend conditions applicable to approximately 4.53 acres in the planned commercial development, PCD District located along New Salem Highway and Salem Creek Drive.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, pursuant to Resolution 18RPH21 adopted by the city council on April 12th, 2018, will conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to rezone approximately 0.68 acres along Cersei Street from single-family residential 15 district to duplex residential RD district. George Carrick is the applicant, notices said public hearing was published in the April 24th, 2000 issue, 18, of a local newspaper. Ms. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our next public hearing is a rezoning along the west side of Cersei Street. Cersei Street is a residential street that is located directly to the east of the fountains at Gateway Development. So it's just north of Medical Center Parkway. There is a, the property's currently zoned RS15. There's an existing single-family home on it. However, this area kind of has a mixture of residential uses, a number of which are non-conforming. There's a mobile home park that's zoned RS15 and some duplexes that are zoned RS15 on the opposite side of Cersei Street. The west side of Cersei Street is predominantly developed with single-family homes and the east side is predominantly developed with duplexes. Mr. Carrick has requested that the two parcels that are shaded in purple on the map before you be rezoned from RS15 to RD. And as I mentioned, there's an existing single-family home on one of those two lots. The RD zoning would enable Mr. Carrick to build duplex on each one of those lots. We'll also mention that there is a rezoning that just passed at the, for this property here at the northwest corner of Warren Street and Medical Center Parkway. That was some city-owned property that was recently rezoned from RS15, so it still shows up on RS15 because that request is so, is so recent, rezoned to MU and GDO3. Mr. Carrick's request, as I mentioned, is to rezone the property to RD. The future land use map contained in the Murfreesboro 2035 Plan, and I've got that pulled up on the screen right now, which was adopted by the planning commission in July 2017, depicts a future land use classification of urban commercial mixed use for the subject property. The urban commercial mixed use classification is described in the plan as intensive urban character with a multiplicity of uses including multifamily residential, entertainment, restaurants, department stores, and other retail, general, and professional offices and hotels. The urban commercial mixed use designation does make provisions for multifamily residential uses, but at a much different scale and density than what the requested RD zone would enable. In addition, Chapter 4, Land Use and Character of the Comprehensive Plan identifies specific sub areas of the city as being opportunities for redevelopment. And I included a few sheets in your agenda materials. One of these sub areas is entitled the West College Street Mixed Use Redevelopment Program. And you can see the area where the subject property is, is right there. And it's in the overall area that is outlined in the red color. The requested parcels are located within this sub area and the comprehensive plan envisions a mixed use redevelopment scenario for this sub area. Taking into account the development that has occurred and is occurring in the vicinity of the subject property, the comprehensive plan put forth a very different vision for this area than what the current zoning request would enable. The plan's vision for the immediate area included the potential of redevelopment on a much larger scale. The RD zone is more consistent with the auto-urban general residential land use character. It staff's opinion that the requested rezoning is not consistent with the recommendations of Chapter 4 of the Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan. And the planning commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on April 4th and unanimously recommended denial by a vote of six to nothing. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. I'll bring your attention to a letter that I laid on your desks from Mr. Jay Jackson, attorney who is representing Mr. Carrick. And I believe Mr. Jackson would like to say a few words before the public hearing.
Mr. Jackson.
Good evening. I do want, I'd like to, I'm not sure I'm going to go into as much detail as I did the planning commission. I've given a letter which pretty much lays out why we think that this proposal is not inconsistent with the 2035 plan. But what I would like to do before I do that, Mr. Carrick did not speak at the planning commission. He would like to talk also in advance of his proposal and I want to defer to him and give him a chance. And if the council would allow, I'd like a few minutes when he concludes.
My name is George Carrick. I thank you for letting me speak tonight in favor of this petition. I bought my first property in 1977 on Cersei Street. There were, there were 10 duplexes that were newly built and I bought three of them. It was in the county at the time, up until 1993. In 1993, several things happened simultaneously. The city built the sewer system and two properties, the two properties in question came up for auction, that's lot 30 and 31 Cersei Street. And I bought those properties and the city said that they would give me sewer if I would not oppose annexation. Apparently, the sewer addition was part of the process for which the, the annexation would occur after that was completed. And I said I did not want to oppose annexation. I thought it'd be a great idea. And I said that I was going to put duplexes on them if I could get permission. And they said you have to do that with the county and we will not oppose your petition for duplexes. I went to the county, told them the situation, did surveys of both lots, did a site plan, had the county approve the petition for duplexes, took it back to the city and the city gave me sewer. That's partly why we're here. From 1993 to the present, I have been encouraging the city to do something positive about this area. When I bought that property in 1993, there, I'm going to try to do this from memory, in the entire section, which, which includes three streets, two of them named Cersei, one named Warren and one named Toon. The first Cersei Street is the one that goes to the trailer court. In 1993, there were approximately 20 trailers, 25 houses, and 10 duplexes. I could be a little off on the number of trailers, but I tried to go back to my records. There were some 70, some 70 total residences in that area. I have tried over the years to try to improve that area. The city has instead taken some of the residential areas and converted them from single-family dwellings to trailers. Right in the middle of this section, they have a whole, a whole section there, they zoned to MO, took a house out, put in eight trailers, leased that house. From that point until the present time, the number of residences in that area has increased from approximately 70 to 131. Those are the figures as of a week ago. Of those 131, 10 duplexes, the same number that were there in 1977, 26 houses, an increase of three. Of those three increases, all of those are HUD manufactured houses brought in by trailer and put at the end of Cersei Street. That is recently as a couple of years ago. The number of trailers has increased to the point that there are 80-some trailers in that area now. And yet they have zoned that area RS15, admittedly telling me that the RS15 zoning is not appropriate, but demanding that I adhere to it because it doesn't apply to duplexes. And then saying that the 2035 plan, which they are sure is going to occur by 2035, I'll be 92 or dead, is going to be clearly effective, it's likely to happen, even though from 1993 to the present time, not one improvement, not one single-family structure on a permanent foundation has been built in that area, not one. I'm asking that I be allowed to put those duplexes in there. They will be a great improvement over the area immediately. And it would also, I think, allow you to honor the promise the city of Murfreesboro made to me. Thank you.
Sure. I think what, one of the things, I've, like I said, I provided you all with the letter and I made some, some points. I know these comprehensive plans, counties, cities, municipalities do, are important. They're important documents to help guide and provide principles. And what I've tried to do in, with my letter is show that this, this rezoning is consistent with the principles that are inside of your plan. The plan calls for a zoning designation that would involve multifamily uses. No, the staff has mentioned that it's, it's not contemplated necessarily duplex uses, but it does talk about multifamily uses, a duplex is a, is a multifamily use. The plan talks about identifying the need for additional residential units for lower-income families. I think this, this is an area where we have in our city, lower-income families and certainly a duplex, this rezoning will help increase that. Maybe not by the same number that a large apartment complex in the avenues might, but it certainly would in this particular area. And another thing I don't think is, is critical is that this is not inconsistent with what's out there right now. And I understand, Mr. Smotherman talked about, well, there's no RS15, there's no residential duplex zoning out there now. Well, no, there's not. But that's because that's the zoning that the city chose to assign it at the time when they annexed it. They didn't have to, they could have given it a duplex zoning because that's exactly what those were. Those were duplexes. But to just say that, well, we have RS15, so that means we don't have consistent uses out there and ignore the fact that you've got a row of duplexes directly across the street, to me is arbitrary. It's not rational. There's no basis to do that. And so, and another thing that I wanted to address is to do with this seemingly, I've, I got this in the meeting with Mr. Whitaker, I got this at the planning commission, there seems to be this assumption that this area is going to go commercial. It's just, it's going to happen. But yet, during my meeting with Mr. Whitaker, during the planning commission, I did not hear one person provide anything factual to establish that this is going to happen, that there's a developer out there looking at this area, that there's actually plans in the works to actually make these changes. So to just conclusively make an assumption that this is quote, "going commercial" or that this area will change, I don't think, without some sort of factual basis to use that as a, a basis upon which to deny this zoning request, to me is not rational and it should not be accepted. So we think that, is it a perfect fit for your plan? It may not be the perfect fit. It's certainly not the fit that staff would like for you to do, that's for certain. But it's definitely a fit that works for now. It's not going to, it's not going to, in the long run, if this area goes commercial, it's going to go commercial. It's going to happen because somebody's going to come, they're going to package this property and they're going to offer enough money it's going to take. But until then, why do we sit still? Why not let this man invest some money in this city and improve this area, at least these two lots? How's that actually going to cause harm to the development of the city or this area? It's just not going to. And without somebody providing some factual basis for it, I don't really think that that should serve as a basis for any sort of a denial of any kind of zoning request. So we think it's positive. We think this is a good thing to do in this particular area. He's the one person we know that's willing to go in there and invest some of his money in that area and make a positive change for Cersei Street and a positive change for this area. So we hope that you'll support that.
Okay, we need to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezon, or rezoning, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 18OZ21 to rezone an area along Cersei Street to duplex residential RD District. Mr. LaLance.
Mr. Jackson, I might get you to answer a question for me. Is there, you know, as far as keeping our word for a promise that was made 25 years ago, why hasn't, if, you know, the idea was it was going to go to duplexes back then in 1993, 25 years ago, why wasn't there any rezoning done when the annexation take, took place or before now? I guess if, I mean, look, you know, a promise that's 25 years old, I, kind of is a little different than we made you a promise last month and now we're not keeping it. It's just my, kind of my gut honest feeling on it, okay? So can you walk me through why that shouldn't be the case?
I might ask, Mr. Carrick might be able to give you a little.
Yeah, I mean that with all respect, I'm just kind of trying to think through that.
Stan, no, it's a, when, originally, when, when this issue came up and Mr. Carrick hired me, we went through that. And I researched it and I looked into it and I wrote a letter to Mr. Ives and Mr. Ives and I have exchanged, I think he probably remembers, maybe he doesn't, I don't know, but we exchanged correspondence on the issue of, of Mr. Adalot's representation to Mr. Carrick about the zoning. And Mr. Ives, on behalf of the city, took the position that it was unenforceable, they weren't going to honor it, didn't have to, they weren't acknowledging it was made, don't get me wrong, but that was the position the city was made. So we chose, instead of, well, at that time, we chose, instead of making a claim legally, we chose to come through the process that the city has set up to get the zoning changed. We believed, we have a good application, we believe we have the right set of facts, we believe we are justified in our request under the ordinance and pursuant to the guidelines that the ordinance requires. So that's why we brought it. Now, specifically why he didn't go, I would rather him ask, answer that because, I don't know that I can.
Yeah, please.
I don't know that I can, I can say it as well as he could.
When the city actually annexed the property, they put on the RS15, but I assumed that that would not have affected their promise for the RD. The city attorney said that I had, that I had run out of time, even though there was apparently no time limit. And I really think I need to explain that. I, I took care of those properties, but I didn't, I didn't really need to develop them. I didn't need the money. In 2014, my wife was diagnosed with dementia. By 2016, I could no longer care for her at home and I had to put her in assisted living. Unfortunately, she died at the end of last year while I was trying to get this done so I could actually have the income that I needed at the time to help take care of my wife. I've invested the time and the money in this, in the effort in this for those two years and I believe that the city should honor that promise. And that's why I didn't develop them and that's why the city attorney said that I had not done it in a timely fashion. I didn't need to, I took care of the property, I maintained it, I upgraded it and it, it wasn't essential at the time. Now I think it's just right that it be done that way. Does that answer?
Yes, sir, thank you. Many times when we annex, annex something, we'll, we'll simultaneously put the zoning that is requested at that time. And so that's, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to situate it right in my mind a little bit.
There was, there was a certain amount of ill will, I do not know why. But when this was taken into the city, I approached Mr. Adalot and I asked him if he had any plans for this. And he says, no. And I said, well, the city ought to buy it, ought to buy it up now. Because I could see that this was coming, that this property was going to go downhill, which it has done. I mean, with all due respect to the, to the planning department, this property from 1993 to now has gone downhill significantly. Increased crime, at least two iterations of gangs, drugs. The situation is such that there's one way to get in there and all that they have to do is to stand there at the corner with their cellphone and every time the police show up, they make their phone call. I've been fighting this for many, many years. I told Mr. Adalot that the city should buy this property and upgrade it. And he looked at me in the face and he says, well, if we want it, we'll just take it. And that's been pretty much the problem I have had with the planning commission, is just a certain attitude that, you know, who are you? We can do what we want to do. And, and I think that that, that was part of why they zoned it RS15, which made no sense at all. It doesn't today.
The only thing I wanted, I would say is this, it doesn't make a lot of sense. I agree with you, you're right, Mr. LaLance, in terms of the way that it should have been handled. It should have been handled differently then than it was. I mean, I mean, why would you bring in 10 duplexes and give them an RS-15 designation zoning when RS-15 doesn't allow duplexes? That makes zero sense. I mean, no sense. Unless your goal is to keep somebody from using a different purpose, it just doesn't make sense what happened. But putting that aside, putting the promise aside, regardless, I mean, we believe that our application is, whether there was ever a promise made or not, we believe our application is supported factually in the record by the requirements of the ordinance.
Mr. Blomley?
Hey, let me say something. I just want to say one thing real quick, I, just to you guys personally. I've got to leave here in the next five minutes or so, and so, I'm, I'm not getting up for any other reason other than trying to make the second half of the district finals, okay? So, I apologize if I have to get up before this gets going. Just wanted to say that, so you knew I wasn't being disrespectful, okay? Sorry.
Mr. Blomley. If one of these houses were to, or duplexes were to burn tonight, would they be able to rebuild that duplex, or would they be held to the RS-15 zoning?
The non-conforming duplexes that are across the street, if they burned beyond 75% of their value, could not be rebuilt. They could, whatever would be rebuilt there would have to conform to the existing zoning district, which is RS-15.
And under the 2035 plan, is there any scenario where duplexes fall under multifamily?
No, in, in this instance, you know, Mr. Jackson alluded to my comment earlier about the different scale of multifamily that's recommended by the, the Murfreesboro 2035 Land Use Plan. And I included the, in your agenda materials, I included the sheet from the 2035 plan that describes the urban, commercial, mixed-use character recommendation. The density that it recommends for this land use character is approximately 60 to 70 dwelling units per acre. It's a, a very much a more intense type of multifamily that it's recommending than what the RD zone would permit, which would be approximately eight dwelling units, eight, nine dwelling units per acre total, if you were building at the minimum lot size.
And this zone is adjacent to the fountains, isn't it?
That's correct. And the, the fountains at Gateway is zoned MU.
And is there any scenario where a rational person would think that with the development that we got on the avenue, that multifamily would ever imply that that would be a great location to build a duplex?
Well, I, I don't know if I'm qualified to answer what a rational person might do. That, that didn't come out right, but...
Well, let me, let me ask the question differently, then. Is, is there any scenario where anybody else has came in and thought it would be a good idea to develop property within that area as a duplex? I mean, have we had anybody else come in and say, "I would like to buy this property in the avenue area and develop duplexes on it"?
To my knowledge, this is the first rezoning request that we have in the immediate vicinity for RD zoning, to my knowledge. With, as I mentioned, there was a rezoning at the corner of Warren and Medical Center Parkway for MU zoning recently. And one thing that, that, that stuck in my mind and Mr. Whitaker's mind is that by rezoning it to a zoning district that, that permits something that's not, that's not consistent with the land use plan, it's, it's building in some impediments to the vision that the future land use plan puts forth.
But all the trailers and duplexes that are currently there were there before this property was annexed into the city. Nothing has been built in this area that would not go along with the current zoning. Is that correct?
There, there are some single-family homes that are, that, like, the single-family home on, on Mr. Carrick's property is, is a permitted use in the RS-15 zone. But, and I'll bring it back up to the, the map here. Mr. Carrick mentioned there is some RMO zoning, which is a mobile home district, so there are some conforming mobile homes there. But there are other mobile, mobile homes that are zoned RS-15 that are non-conforming, and the duplexes on the opposite side of Cersei Street are zoned RS-15, and they're non-conforming as well.
So, Mr. Blomley, when, when the property was originally annexed to come into the city, is it correct that any property that's annexed that comes in, comes in with a, with an RS-15 zoning?
The current, our current zoning ordinance, and this is the way it's been since I've been here since 2001, I can't speak to what the zoning ordinance said in '93, but at least as long as I've been here, when a piece of property is zoned residential in the county and it comes in without a companion zoning request, it automatically receives an RS-15 zoning designation.
Is it safe to say that one of the reasons that that property may have kept that RS-15 zoning is knowing that that being a transitional area for really the last 15 years or so, that there's really not the opportunity to change it from any other zoning where it would not hit that vision of what is, is being anticipated there? In other words, if someone comes in and changes piecemeal individual zonings, it's going to be very hard for that, that to be accomplished?
I think that, that as we, I, I, and I do think, and I, and I've told Mr. Jackson this, in fact, I told him this in an email yesterday, I think that in order to carry out the vision of the 2035 plan, it's going to take a holistic look at the area, what zoning would be appropriate in order to make the vision of the 2035 plan come to fruition, as opposed to rezoning one or two parcels.
So, my last, just my last question is, obviously, and, and understand, Mr. Carrick bringing the request forward, and Mr. Jackson bringing the request forward, and, you know, we've seen the area change, but the zoning across the street, what is that zoning across the street?
Uh, zoning across the street is...
If you were to look at the parcel as a whole, so if, not just this individual parcel, if you look at the land in its entirety, Cersei, the whole area there, what's the zoning across the street? Where Mr. Swanson's new property is?
Oh, across Medical Center Parkway. Yeah, that property is zoned MU.
Okay, what's the property adjacent to it, where, and again, I'm taking the property in its entirety, so all of the parcels? The fountains as what zoning?
MU.
The city's corporate headquarters site, what's the zoning there?
I believe that's MU as well.
So, is there anything that's along Medical Center Parkway in this corridor that's, where we're looking at the 2035 plan, that's anticipated to be a duplex or residential?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
The, the residential that is, that is proposed in this immediate area is, you can see, here's the future land use map. All of that pink area is the area that is identified as urban, commercial, mixed-use. And I mentioned the rezoning at the corner of Warren and Medical Center Parkway. And in addition, we do have a preliminary plat on this coming Wednesday's Planning Commission agenda for the Swanson property across Medical Center Parkway for a four-lot subdivision in the MU zoning district. And, of course, the fire station is under construction right now as well.
Hearing no other questions or comments, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that this resolution be denied.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Pursuant to Resolution 18RPH22, adopted by the city...
Just one second before we move forward. Let me make a comment. I am empathetic to the desire to create, and think that we need to give attention to affordable housing, and I appreciate the efforts that you're, that you're making with this proposal. It is, it's location makes it difficult to see how we can move forward, but I, you know, this, it's going to be a while before we see anything happen related to the 2035 plan. So, I appreciate what your goal was, and I just think probably the timing of this proposal and its location makes it real difficult to not see how we're going to realize the dream of our 2035 plan and not address this particular area. But, you know, guys, we can't leave, this, this idea of affordable housing continues to be, it's, if it's, if we were building, if you were proposing multiple units and a huge development in this area, it would probably fly.
If it were an MU use?
If it was a, if it was a more, more compatible to the MU, I think it probably would fly. The sad thing is, it probably, the economics of it don't, don't work right now in that area. So, thank you for what you have tried to do in that area, and I want to commend you for that. I know that's a, it still doesn't help you, but, you know, I think we might need to look at how we can encourage and incentivize some of the development in these marginal areas that are close to significant areas in our community. How can we incentivize a development that truly can address some of these issues of, of affordable housing in these areas that are, in some instances, are kind of blighted? And I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a difficult area, and I've, I've been over there and, and know that area very well. And it's got, but it's, it's a complicated issue to address it, but maybe with people who are willing to make an investment, somehow, the city can come alongside them and incentiv, incentivize a, a development there that truly is fit into the plan.
And I think in our last meeting, we, we made the effort to try, with working with Habitat, to, to create more affordable housing in Murfreesboro. We all, we all recognize the need for affordable housing and, and, but, but we also want, within that affordable housing, to have a quality of life where there, there's not gangs and not situations that, we've got people standing on the street corner and calling ahead that the police are coming in. And so, it, it's, this, this area is located in a, a unique situation, because it is probably in one of the, the, as far as the value of that property, it, it's probably at the point today that the value of the property far outweighs anything that's actually located on that property. And I think with the fact that we have currently exhausted just about all of the property that the city currently owns within that area, it will only push the issue quicker to, to see this development be developed with more of what the 25, 2035 plan had indicated that it would, or that what we approved in the 2035 plan is to what would be appropriate for this usage.
Mr. Mayor, I would encourage Mr. Carrick to get with staff and see if there's any areas in Murfreesboro that we could put affordable housing. This is just not a good location.
All right, we'll now move to Resolution 18RPH22, adopted by the City Council on April 12, 2018, to conduct a public hearing and consider a proposed amendment to rezone approximately .42 acres along North Maple Street, Maple Nook PRD, from duplex residential RD District to planned residential development district. Blue Sky Construction is the applicant. Notice that said public hearing was published in the April 24, 2000 issue of the local newspaper. Ms. Anthony?
How are you doing, Mayor McFarland and council members? I'm Donald Anthony with the Planning Department. I'm presenting on behalf of Margaret Ann Green this evening. She's not able to attend the meeting. Blue Sky Construction has requested that a 0.42-acre property located along the east side of North Maple Street be rezoned from RD, or duplex residential, to PRD, or planned residential district. The proposed PRD would consist of two single-family homes on a single-family lot of record. The homes would both face North, North Maple Street and would share a common driveway that would run between the homes, as shown on page 13 of the pattern book in your packet. Adjacent zoning includes RD on the north, south, and east, and the property to the west is zoned RM16. The Murfreesboro 2035 Land Use Plan shows auto-urban or general residential with density of up to 8.64 dwelling units per acre as the most appropriate land use for this property. This rezoning request appears to be consistent with the land use plan recommendation. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at its April 4 meeting and voted unanimously to send this forward to you with a favorable recommendation, but they had a few caveats that I want to cover quickly. First, the commission recommended that the front setback be expanded from 30 feet to 35 feet for these structures, and the pattern book now shows the 35-foot front setback. Second, the commission requested that the applicant provide the council a copy of the restrictive covenants for this project, and that the covenants address the shared driveway and storage in the garages. I'll let Mr. Mulchan discuss the covenants with you in a moment. Third, the commission recommended a four-foot-high ornamental iron fence between the two backyards. I didn't see any mention of the type of fence in the backyards in the pattern book, but I did see that, that a fence was shown. Again, I'll ask Mr. Mulchan to address that as well. And fourth, the commission recommended that elevation B, which is shown on page 14 of the pattern book, include additional masonry beyond the cementitious siding that's shown on that example elevation. The revised pattern book does not address that particular issue at all. Rob Mulchan from SEC is here representing the applicant, and he has a presentation regarding this request. Staff can answer any questions that you may have before or after the public hearing.
Mr. Mulchan, before you get started, Ms. Anthony gave us a few things that were not included in, in the plan development packet. Are those supposed to be included, or they, are those things y'all have agreed to?
The, we have, we've worked with staff, we have submitted a draft copy of the CCRs to them for review, we're reviewing them with them in conjunction. There's, the CCRs more or less cover most of the restrictions that were asked for in regards to that. There's a couple little items that we're still working on the verbiage of it all, but I mean, more or less, it covers the side of making, taking care of the shared common spaces, because this is a, kind of a somewhat unique situation in regards to, you know, two lots of record on, you know, two houses on one lot of record and sharing a common driveway. Now, I know that's one of the Planning Commission's concerns, and we're working through the verbiage of that with staff on that side, so...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council, Rob Mulchan of SEC. I'm here tonight on behalf of Blue Sky Construction. I'm accompanied by Mr. Brian Burns of Blue Sky Construction. Give you a quick overview of the Maple Nook itself and where it's at. As you can see, it's around the east side of North Maple Street, about a little ways north of downtown itself. As Donald talked about, our zoning classification up in this area was under RD. We're asking for a zoning to P, Planned Residential District for two units on this lot. As we are in, in regards to the future land use map, we are in, we, we meet the requirements for the land use in regards to this being a residential character neighborhood. We're, so we're, we're still providing the residential character with two homes on one lot. Our density is pretty much middle of the range, a little lower, low, mid-range in regards to what the land use calls for on that side, and we're providing two single-family lots, and two single-family homes on a single lot is also in conjunction with the land use plan. A picture of the existing home on the property, as you can see, the home itself is in kind of a very neglected stage. Mr. Burns was looking at this property in regards to, you know, he's been inside the home itself. It's, you know, it's in derelict kind of conditions, and felt that it would be a better opportunity to go ahead and move forward with revitalizing this piece of property and putting in, moving forward with this petition. This is the rear of the home itself. This is the neighbor to the south side of the home, as you can see the character of the home in there itself. And these are a couple homes that are directly across the street. You can see the kind of reduced setback, and that was one of the questions that we had when we, when we went forward with this proposal before council, is that we actually pushed the house five foot further away from the street, so we're at 35-foot setback, which is more or less kind of similar to these couple homes that are across the street in regards to, as you can see, another home that was recently remodeled in the past year or so, has a very, has a much closer setback than some of the other homes that are along the street itself, which is similar to what we're proposing on, on this property. This is a picture, south on Maple Street, and a picture, north on Maple Street. So, you can kind of see the character and the setbacks of the homes, kind of varies a little bit in places, but for the most part, these newer homes, or these remodeled homes are... in places, but for the most part, these newer homes, these remodeled homes are a little bit closer to the street, creating a bigger sense of backyard and a more, more streetscape appearance in regards to pulling those front porches and stoops up closer to the sidewalk and creating more of a streetscape character and neighborly kind of feel. Plan itself, as I talked about, is two homes. You can see in the plan on the right-hand side there, the homes themselves will be on the, on the north and south sides with a common shared driveway in the center. These homes will be purchased through a horizontal property regime, so that'll be part of the CCRs on that side. As you can see, the garages themselves are actually located behind, behind the homes with a common parking area back there. We've got two garage spaces and also two uncovered spaces behind the garage themselves. And bringing those homes up to the 35-foot off the front setback allows us for that larger green backyard space on the backside. So you can see, that's pretty much the configuration, and also two sidewalks leading from the common driveway back to the front stoops. These will be two-story homes, so two bedrooms or more located inside. These will be a minimum 1,700 square feet homes. These will be, we're looking at two different varying styles of homes. One is the bungalow style and one is the craftsman style of architecture. We'll take a look at those elevations here in a minute. Each home will have, will have a covered front porch or stoop. Both homes will not exceed the maximum 35 feet in height for this zoning area. Two cars, like I said, will be set at the rear, two-car garage will be set at the rear of the property behind the homes. Both garages will have access via a common shared driveway. And garage doors will also have, others that will complement the architecture itself. This is a picture of one of the elevations we're potentially looking at utilizing for this property. This is the craftsman style home. You can see the character and quality. Talk a little about the building materials. The front elevations will be a mixture of cementitious siding and also brick and stone accents. Sides and rears of both buildings will have cementitious fiberboard siding. Vinyl will only be permitted in the trim and soffit areas and accessory structures that will be made to match the main structures and architectural quality and character and materials. This is the other proposed elevation style. This is more the bungalow style architecture, as you can see there with the brick and masonry type base with a more craftsman and with more of a masonry siding along the front side of elevations there. This is a couple of the first floor plans in regards to both that. You can see the craftsman style on the left and the bungalow style on the right, just kind of giving you an idea about the front porch experience in the homes themselves, but also a little bit of the interior of these homes on that side. And these are mostly about 29 to 30-foot wide in width and about 59 to 60-foot in depth on that. So it's a long, narrow, linear architectural footprint. Another thing that we wanted to do is make certainly complemented not only the architecture, but also complemented the streetscape appearance of the home and make certain that we were providing for a well landscaped appearance to the home itself. As you can see, we're providing a six-foot wide, or minimum six-foot wide planting bed along the front side of the home to help accent that architecture in regards to creating a good streetscape feel. And then we also talked about putting in a minimum three-foot-wide planting bed along both sides of the homes, along the periphery of the development, to help create a neighborly character with our neighbors next door. Plant materials will consist of evergreen planting shrubs and bushes and, you know, ground covers and perennials and such to help give a good quality of green appearance throughout the year, but also some accent in color during the other spring months and summer months as well. The front yard shall be covered in sod. We're also incorporating in the backyard to help kind of delineate the two different spaces for backyard space. What we'll be utilizing, as we talked about during the planning commission, we've made, we were maybe utilizing a four-foot-high black iron fence to help delineate the space in back for both of the homes, so they kind of have their own rear recreational area. I appreciate your time and consideration of this request, and I'm available for any questions now. We're up to the clearing.
Any questions for Mr. Mulcham? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this planned residential development application, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 18OZ-22 to rezone an area along North Maple Street, Maple Nook PRD to planned residential development PRD district.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance. I'm sorry, forgot he left. Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, you now have recommendations of the planning commission to schedule public hearings. Mr. Blomley, I'm gonna go ahead and read through these.
Sure.
Rezone approximately 5.8 acres along Osborne Lane to RS-10. Zoning amendment to approximately 5.01 acres on Oak Haven PRD along Con Hocken Court. Annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately 18.75 acres along Armstrong Valley Road. Zoning approximately 18.29 acres along Armstrong Valley Road to RS-6 simultaneous with annexation and rezone approximately 44.5 acres RS-6. Annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately .96 acres along Indian Park Drive. Zoning amendment for approximately 4.73 acres in the Rutherford Boulevard self-storage PCD located at 2615 South Rutherford Boulevard. Rezone approximately 3.64 acres in Veterans Commons CH along Franklin Road and Veterans Parkway. Rezone approximately 8.99 acres in Village at Old Fort PRD along Old Fort Parkway PRD. And amendments to zoning ordinance section seven, site plan review, section 26, off-site parking, queuing and loading, and chart four, required off-street parking and queuing, spaces by use pertaining to site plan review and minimum parking requirements for outdoor seating areas, commercial centers, and neighborhood shopping centers. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Planning Commission conducted public hearings on all of these items on May the 2nd. The planning commission meeting lasted a little bit under two hours, so that we think that all of these can be accommodated in one evening at the city council, and we would recommend a public hearing date for all nine items of June the 14th.
You have a recommendation to have these public hearings on June the 14th.
Moving to approve the recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. We now have recommendations of the interim city manager regarding a contract with CBRE Herry for owner representative project management services relating to the new Southwest School and the amount of not to exceed $160,000. Mr. Crumley.
Mayor, in order to continue the aggressive timeline for construction of the Southwest School, it's important we bring on two professionals tonight. CBRE Herry is the owner's rep on the project for the city, and the next action we'll recommend to you, the architects for the contractor, Johnson and Bailey. We've had great success with CBRE Herry on a number of projects that they have represented us with the contractors and the architects. We'd like to bring them in early on this process. The goal is to have the school on the ground and ready to go around July the 15th. It will be a race. And so having Herry involved early and getting them into the process now, I would think is imperative for having a chance of success of bringing that school in on time. The cost of missing the guideline is about three-quarters of a million dollars in having to set up portals. And so we are pushing hard. The city's already signed a number of small contracts for engineering services, soils testing, other preliminary items that all were under the $25,000 to afford to be managed. But this, this is the first of the major contracts for your consideration.
What is the closing date on the land?
I don't know. Have we said that? Have we done?
We're waiting on getting a final boundary survey.
Okay.
So that we can know exactly what we're buying.
All right.
I will commend our staff. They have proceeded post haste. We've met with the county, so that a significant part of the process will begin when the school is annexed into the city. Again, 10 and a half months is pretty much the smallest time for building an overall creek-sized school. So we're right on the edge of beginning to bring it in in time for school to plan.
Okay.
No questions. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now approve a contract for architectural services relating to the new Southwest Elementary School with Johnson and Bailey Architects, PC, for a professional fee of 3.94 percent, not to exceed $925,000.
Mayor Johnson and Bailey capped their fee at 3.94 percent on the actual cost of overall creek, which construction on overall creek was just shy of $24 million. The anticipated, the anticipated cost for the new construction here is more like $28.6 million by the time land purchases, road construction, utilities, other work, furnishings, architect's fee. We're projecting a total project for this school at around $33 million. So we're, again, recommending your approval of Johnson and Bailey as architects for the new Southwest Elementary School.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item C has been removed from your agenda. Do we have any beer permits?
No, sir, not tonight.
Okay. You have a couple of board and commission appointments that are recommending, recommending Officer Sam Smith. Actually, yeah, it's officer, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, Officer Sam Smith for the representative of the employee on the pension committee, and then Mary Beth Hagan, an attorney here in town to take the vacancy left by Marion Bean on the disciplinary review board.
Okay. Any statements that need to be paid?
Not tonight.
All right. Any other business from staff?
No, sir.
Any other business from the city council?
Mayor, just one comment. I know we're proud of our Murfreesboro Police Department on a daily basis, but tonight, we're extremely proud of them for being in the spotlight in Nashville with the Murfreesboro Police Department Honor Guard doing the presentation of the colors. So, great job by the Murfreesboro Police Department.
They look, they look good.
They look fantastic. They were in the background as Sheryl Crow was singing the National Anthem for the whole time.
Also have spent the last two days, we had Derek graduation at Black Fox Elementary, and that was phenomenal. Mr. Joe, the principal at Black Fox, is also retiring May the, I looked, it's, we have a city manager meeting at 4 o'clock that afternoon. I think his retirement party is 4 to 6, June 1st, maybe?
I'm guessing May 24th.
That's it, May 24th. And then also, the battle, Mr. Martin, what was it, the book battle in the borough was tonight at Bradley Academy. There was, every single one of our elementary schools were represented. All the librarians at our schools were there, and the air conditioner was out. So it made for a hot event, but I think the future of Murfreesboro is bright with all the kids that we have coming through our school system right now. All right, we'll stand adjourned.